I know. All right, this is what's gonna call the meeting. We're gonna call the meeting to board. Everyone can say thank you to Mr. Wade for bringing the flag. Charlie. Thank you. To mention that Norton Media is recording the meeting, if anybody else didn't know that. Alongside our chair leader, so that's okay. So first, we're gonna start with a recognition of the Norton Youth Cheer.
All right, 10 new cheer from up first. You guys can come on up and you can turn around and face the audience. Right out to everyone. Awesome job. All right, these slanty shirts are so cute. All right, so very excited tonight to recognize our Norton Youth Cheer 10U team. They had an incredible season. They were second place at the EMAS Power and Pink Competition. Guys have pink bows for that competition? Second place at Locals in Walhalla. Third place at State. And then they had the privilege of going to Florida for the national championship. And they came in fourth in the country out of all other 10U teams. So congratulations, that's amazing. With it all just simply? Or did you compete there too? Very, very cool. Was it so much fun? Did you guys go to SeaWorlds? Amazing, congratulations, ladies, nice job, congratulations. Thank you. Should we do a picture of Spencer?
Yeah.
Okay. Are you got one? All right, you're good. All right, thank you, nice job. All right, now let's bring 14U teams to one up. So 14U, who's in eighth grade? Seventh grade? Sixth grade? Any fifth graders? The only one person's moving on to high school cheer.
No, seven of them total.
So now the 14U competition record this year is incredible. So first place win at the Power and Pink and the Power and Pink Award at the EMAS Power and Pink Competition. Amazing. First place hit zero. For those of you guys who don't cheer, hitting zero means you make no mistake, send all during your entire routine. Grand champions at Locals in Walhalla. And then first place in another hit zero at State. But the most exciting thing for this team is that they are national champions. 14U, best team in the entire country. Hot pink. Do you wear them tonight?
They gave us 36, a no extra large jacket.
Well, you guys look great, I love your shorts, congratulations, thank you.
Let me get that more space, because I'd love to see you guys do a little routine up there. Congratulations, you guys, that's a big achievement, thanks for representing Norton to make us all proud. Thank you so much, we look forward to seeing you guys do in the future, high school and beyond. So keep making us proud, you guys, nice job.
They come back year after year after year. Steph, how many times has Norton been the national champion?
Two out of four.
Two out of four, that's amazing. Amazing, amazing.
Who are the coaches? Are there coaches in them? All right, well, I don't know if you guys really want to stay here, but I'm meeting, so it's not important if you all have to leave now.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you guys, thank you.
That was so sweet, that's. Thank you.
All right, so next up, we're gonna have the recognition of the voice of democracy state final performer.
Thank you. I believe I see Isabella in the crowd. Why don't you come down towards the front, help your family come along with you and help Mr. Litt. Would you be willing to come down as well? I see you in the back. Yes, you. So I'm really excited to go to high school. Congratulations, Isabella. Since 1947, the Voice of Democracy has been veteran of former war's premier scholarship program. Each year, nearly 27,000 high school students compete by writing and reporting audio. On a annual patriotic theme, this year's theme was what are the greatest attributes of our democracy? Isabella Ferguson is a junior, and she was recognized for the first time in at least 24 years for Norton as a regional first place winner for the Voice of Democracy contest. So the last time someone from Norton was recognized at that level was 25 years ago, so it's an amazing accomplishment. As a district's and regional winner, she represented Norton High School at the state finals on January 28th, where she received fourth place in the state of Massachusetts over 3,500 entries. And she received a $1,250 scholarship and further cash compensation from the World Women's Auxiliary. Congratulations, Isabella, that was amazing.
Um, yeah, so I wrote about freedom, our ability to change our constitution and amendments, and how that's impacted generations. There was a lot of things.
And how was it speaking in kind of all of those people?
Oh, well, I said in my audio essay, and I didn't actually have to say the essay.
Okay, so that's a big focus, right?
Yes.
Very good. And young parents, okay?
Yes.
All right, let me have Mama Tech come up and we can do a picture with them too.
How long did it take you to put this together?
Um, I was working on it during summer break, so it took a decent chunk of time. I've worked on it straight for about like a week.
Really, wow.
All right, so this is what's for. Thank you. Mr. Litt, do you wanna add it?
That just Bella is humble about it, Bella's mom's also a veteran, and that was in her essay. I think veterans who judged the essay were so impressed at the reference that Bella sort of spoke about for her mom's service. So it was really nice.
You must be very proud.
You're very proud.
Congratulations. Oh, absolutely, especially to see one of our former students go so far in the competition. Amazing job. Thank you.
I guess you're leaving to not be in the conference. So I think it's, you don't understand like what that involves. It actually involves, it's like there's three different things. You need to have a sense of history and government. You need to be an excellent writer, and you need to be able to present it really well. The three things together really, really hard. And to do that on a high level is a real no credit factor. So, and you know, you guys don't, I think Lee actually participated in that. She's an excellent writer, fairly well spoken, good student, she didn't go anywhere wrong, so good for Isabella, that is absolutely.
Thank you.
Great, so next up, we have recognition of Mr. Robert.
I know, yeah, I know. So Mr. Blala actually is a high school basketball coach at his hometown of Rhode Island, and found out late yesterday that he has a playoff game tonight. So he sends his regrets, and he would like to have opportunity to come back at another meeting, but he said at the project. Yeah, so which we totally understand, and you know, that's enough, you know, Mr. Blala's dedication, whether it's at school or his coaching is a true testament to who he is, so hopefully we'll see him another time.
Yeah. Okay, so next up, we have vote to approve minutes of January 25th, 2024 joint meeting. February 6th, 2024 budget workshop, and February 8th, we have open executive session meeting. So we have to do each one. So that everybody have a chance to look at the 20, January 25th joint meeting with finance committee and select board. Any questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve the January 25th, 2024 joint meeting finance committee and select board minute? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any comments or questions on the February 26th, 2024?
February 6th?
Yeah.
Those, those have changed, just to make sure you know this, right?
Right, we have the new ones that have happened.
Yeah, so those are not, yeah, February 6th, there's a, there's a different set. It was a whole page.
It was just on the table when we got here.
I read them, I did not see anything that I thought was out of shooting.
It was a very small change, it was a number from KCS 62 to 68.
So are we good with that one? Okay, we have a motion to approve the February 6th, 2024 open session budget workshop meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then the February 8th? Anybody have anything on that one? February 8th? Is there a motion to approve the February 8th, 2024 open session meeting?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. And then the February 8th, 2024 executive session? Minutes? Nothing?
Nothing.
Is there a motion to approve the February 8th, 2024 executive second meeting?
So.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay. All right, warrants, I have reviewed and approved the following warrants. School expense warrants, February 8th, 2024, $193,000.24. And school payroll warrants, February 8th, 2024, $174,025.6. I wish to enter that into public record. All right, so you have update.
So I had a great break. From the JCS, the JCS is excited to start, start their annual elective program tomorrow afternoon. All students, K3, will be taking one of 38 classes of their choosing. Classes are being taught by teachers, staff, central office staff, parents, and NHS students. We are committed to ensuring that students have a voice and choice in their learning, and electives are a great way to make that. Electives also give staff and parents and NHS students a chance to teach something new and different. Our mosaic, you know, created by JCS, created by students at JCS under the direction of artist John Weiner, will be finalized this week. And an open house ceremony is planned for next Thursday. We hope this community and central office students are able to join us, or even to come over at some point to see it. And then, NMS just kicked off their unified basketball schedule yesterday, like a whole game against Berkeley. Our unified athletes set us proud, and they were great support for all of our athletes, students, and staff. NMS wrapped, just wrapped up their Black History Month celebration with different units choosing various activities. Drop Club has been busy working on this year's production, which is fully moka. And then from the hay, March is sometimes called the longest month of the school year, but we do plan different events to help our students keep their enthusiasm alive. We have some spirit days planned, and we have. Our HPTO has a, has a musical bingo night with our sphere utilizing our yellow LLT event at any time to help support our students. And you know, late in class, LGN students joined an amazing Ellen H. Science Day yesterday and today, February 28th, run by our Norton High School students. Next Monday, March 6th, we will celebrate Re: Across America Day with another visit from NHS students, so we'll be great.
Thank you. We may have any questions? Thank you so much. All right, so update on LG North's roof?
Yes, so as the school committee knows, we have had some issues with leaks in the D Wing at LGN. So the D Wing is the wing where our fourth grade classrooms are, that's what the primary issue has been. And it's actually in addition to building, rest of the building was built in 1997, this particular wing, 57, 62. 62, all right, 62. And so this wing was built a year later. This has always kind of been a problem out there. So we've done a few things. Mr. Lazat brought a company out to do a core test, which means they drill onto the roof to kind of see how the thickness of it and the insulation, and see if there's anything in there that we wouldn't have expected. And we've done some air quality tests to make sure that, you know, while there already be leaks, the air is, you know, safe in school and all of those things. And we had talked about going out for a whole new roof. But we have found another solution, which we're excited about, and it's definitely going to be much more financially feasible for us at this time. And will also allow us to get a few more years down the roof, because the last time the roof was replaced was 1990. So it's not quite. Yeah. So Mr. Lazat, talk about what we're gonna do with the roof?
Yeah, so it's primarily one leak that's been persistent, so we've been up there, we've tried to patch it many, many times. It's kind of a wet section, it bucks the property, the solar farm right next to us. There's a chestnut tree that just blocks something, really no sun ever hits that side of the building. The chestnuts that fall are huge. The roof was built in, the last time we redid the roof over there, it was 2004, it was an overlay. So the, the leaks coming in from somewhere, and we just can't find it. So we, we've done several patches around that area, so now we've decided to go with just a much larger patch to pretty much cover the whole D Wing. And that way there, wherever that water's coming in from, we know we'll grab it, and, and that'll take care of that leak there, so. The rest of the roof is, 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 is okay, because it does actually get some sun, but that section doesn't, just does not get any at all, so. The goal would be to someday get all those trees cleaned up over there and try to get a little more sun down that area there. We did do air quality tests a couple of weeks ago, I think just before vacation week. Everything came back really good, and we sampled all rooms throughout the entire building, so we had something to compare about. And so the rooms in D Wing were the same air quality as C Wing, B Wing, and A Wing as well, so that, that should give our staff some peace of mind there. We run dehumidifiers in there at night, just to make sure that everything's running. We've actually, this, this kind of traction hooked up now, that's, that's bringing the water down, so we're catching it, so. And it, and it is only on rainy days. So, but I think this fix will definitely take care of our issue over there, and then buy us some time for, for a while over there. So, and, and the school's in great shape, besides.
We have to wait to a certain time weather-wise to do this?
So we're working on getting quotes right now, while we get three quotes. I have two of them, I'm waiting for one more company to get back to me. Once I receive those three quotes, we'll, we'll be able to go ahead and get it. But yes, we need a certain temperature, it's basically a rubber, rubber roof that just gets cooling down, really.
And this will, we'll be able to pay for this with our facility revolving funds, so it's not something that is going to be an exorbitant cost or something that we'd have to go to town looking for. We're pretty confident that this will be a good fix for the LG.
When, how, how long has this leak's been happening?
Uh, this has been a persistent leak for a while, in this particular room, it's the last room down on D Wing on the left-hand side, which is the closest to that, that corner fence there. So this has been a leak that's been ongoing for, for some time. The thing with leaks is, is they're hard to find, you need a certain amount of rain, you need a, a certain driven rain, you need a puddle up. Where the gut is cleared, where all the, where all the, so you get a fix, you think you got it fixed, you wait a couple of weeks, a couple, you know, a month goes by, we don't get any rain, and then it rains a certain way, and then we get it again, so this is, this goes back some time, this really has, and we've done, if you look up there, this patch is all over it, and we've just done it, so the, the problem with these roofs are, they're flat, so you could have the leak over there, but it comes in over here, because that's water finds its slow out, so. It's, we, we shut that room down a couple of years ago, and then we did a, a kind of a quarter patch up there, we thought we got it bent. It was dry for a while, and then, then it came back again, so. Whether it's a new leak, or whether it's finding a, I mean, a new way of coming in, or whether it's the same one, it's, it's good to. But we have done, we have been consistent with the air quality test in there as well, too, just to make sure that everybody is well.
Thank you. We have Dave. Any feels?
Wait, one question. I'm gonna ask this, because I was told long ago, when we did the high school, that over time, they had just, instead of fixing the roof by pulling up the roof and putting a new roof down, they had tended to just put a new roof over the old existing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And if you remember, shortly after that, we got that year with crazy snow. And I was told by somebody who, who I, I trust on this topic, that it was not inconceivable that the roof would not have been able to hold the weight of multiple roofs in that snow, and we were kind of lucky that we'd done that revamp when we did. So my, my question is, I guess, with the LG, the solution is to put something on top of what we have now. I'm assuming that the rubber's not that heavy, but I'm also, I'm also wondering, is that something we've been doing over the years there as well, where we're just adding layer to layer to layer?
So the last time that roof was done was 2004, and, and the core test proved that it was an overlay, so they took the old roof that was there, it was really bad, and they just put this over it. And that's really not advised, but any of us that, you know, were done roofing, it's cheaper, it's quicker, and a lot of companies will come in and give you that one overlay, but for us, like, the, the next, the next roof job there, we have to go down now, because there's already two layers up there, so we'll have to go down, which again, generally speaking, if you only have the one layer, if leaks here, that's where the, that's where the slit's gonna be in the roof, so. And I, and I should say, the roofs that we have, the, the yellow and the LG in 2004, this is 1997. The JCS was done around 2010, that's a great roof, and the, and the high school around 2013. But when we did the train project, we had a lot of traffic on the roof, and that did not help these older roofs having that much traffic up there, moving equipment, moving the, the HVAC systems on the roof, so. That, that certainly, we did a lot of patching last year, just trying to clean up some of that mess as well. The, the rubber, just through time, just gets brittle, it just loses its flexibility, and the more time goes on, especially on a cold morning, when you go up there, just walking on it could actually crack it, and so, but if you got a leak, you gotta get up there and try and move that water, make sure your roof brain's clear, so. It's, it's, it's definitely, this is going to, this is going to help, it's gonna buy us some time over there, but that roof, 2029, 2030, we're probably looking to go to an MSBA project.
They won't consider it for that.
They will not consider it until it's 25 years.
That's my concern, about 2004. That roof is, you know, 20 years old.
Yeah.
That's not that old for a roof.
No.
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 So that's kind of concerning.
So it comes down again to the, to the weather, not seeing the sun, not drying it out, the trees really hurting it. Anytime a branch falls, anytime a roof vent gets blown off, like, it's, it's all those, flat roofs in New England, in my opinion, just don't work. And it's because of the snow loads, it's because of, it's because we do have to get up there and, and walk on them.
Can I ask why we don't cut the tree?
It's not on our property. We asked the solar farm, that was part of the deal, to, to cut that tree down.
Well, the, the stuff that's over on the roof is on, right?
So the, the corner of that building is so close to their property line, like, it's, it's right there, like, it's, but we, we can't, it's not on our, it's not on our property.
But again, if there's branches over hanging on the roof.
Yep, which we have, we've had the highway department down there.
Great, thanks, Wayne. All right, next up, discussion approval of MSBA Accelerator Repair Program statement in this for Norton Middle School. So keeping in the theme of roofs. Wayne mentioned, this roof here on Norton Middle School was built in 1997, opened in 1998, this is the original roof here. And for those of us who've been around for a while, we may recall that it has had issues really since the very beginning. There's a lot of leaks in cafeteria, and then another, third floor, there's been some things that have been, need to be patched and replaced over the years, so we have finally reached the point where we may be eligible to get on the MSBA list, MSBA list because of the age of the roof. So what we would like to do tonight is have the school committee approve our statement of interest for the Accelerator Repair Program for the MSBA. During the kind of school code, MSBA actually shut down their process. And then they've actually kept it closed for quite a while, because they were trying to catch up on all those programs and products that did not get done. So this is actually the first time that they're reopening the process. So we really think it's important for us to get this process started. Just because we are submitting the statement of interest does not mean that we'll be approved. If we are approved, then we will start the process with the town in terms of funding for the new roof. And at that time, we'll know what the reimbursement percentage is as well. We've also spoken with Mike Units, and he has agreed to support us on his town side of things, and it will go before the select. So unfortunately, Matt Chair, you have a long thing that you need to read here in order for us, which I can read it for you?
Well, I'm like trying.
Yes, of course.
Okay, approving project for accelerated repair, they stop.
No, I think it's just a normal old break, where they're trying to catch up.
Probably won't slow.
I, I, there, there's no acceleration when it comes to the timeline for them, or where they, where they go through it. The roof project, the Accelerator Repair Program is, it's very cut and dry, it's a roof, it's, you do not need to go through, you do not need to develop an educational plan, you don't, all of those things.
The MSBA project, that's funded through taxes, right? Do they stop collecting taxes on those projects?
No. No, 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 so.
But they, they collected funding for, for those projects, and, and what you're telling me is that two years of projects are just not gonna happen.
So what happened was that they had a lot of projects that were kind of in the pipeline, and then with the cost of materials and labor and everything, it's increased. A lot of the projects increased in, in cost, you know, twice the amount that they originally anticipated, and those projects were already in and approved. So they had to kind of, and, and ultimately, we haven't really had anything else that we needed to go out for, and they weren't going to approve the group for this time anyway, but until it was old enough, but.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah.
Right, for wait, there's solar panels.
Oh, they were, they were over the cafeteria, and they're gone.
They were all over the gym, we removed those.
They're all, yeah.
And those also never were.
Card just put it, put it, put it on, we're getting no solar panel.
No. We don't have, we're on that.
Anything else? All right, so I just have to read this?
Yes. Yes.
Great, resolved, having convened in an open meeting on February 29th, 2024, prior to the SOI submission closing date, school committee of Norton, in accordance with this charter by law, has ordered to authorize a superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated February 24th, Portonville School, located at 215 West Main Street, Morton, Mass. 2766, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Board, School Building Authority, and the Accelerator Program, Prince John New Roof, hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of the application, awarding of a grant of any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the town of Norton to filing an application for funding with Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Done? Yes, great job, thank you.
So is there a motion to approve the MSBA Accelerator Repair Program Statement of Interest for Norton Middle School?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
All right, next up, discussion on school choice fundraising in February 25th, votes I did.
Okay.
Can I? I'm, I'm gonna, motion to table this, or to, to delay it, that, that was not a motion right here, I'm just stating that it's a motion to delay it. And my rationale is basically, as I, as I read through the packet, I'm, I'm not sure that the information that we received is actually answering the question that we asked. So, um, I talked to Jeff today, I talked to Christine a little bit, well, I think what we're really looking for here. And I think it would be better off if we wait until we got that information to discuss it, doesn't make sense to discuss it what we have here because it's, it's not answering the question. Cost versus reimbursement. I think it's not about that.
I mean, I, I think the whole process, like, the rest of the, the budgets for the town haven't even been discussed in any form yet. And we're almost at the point where we're setting our budget not knowing our number and what we get. So I mean, I think, I, we've discussed it, we know it's going to be bad, I think we're compounding it by just, we continuously say it's going to be bad, it's going to be bad. But we just don't know how bad it's going to be without those numbers from the town. And, and as I mentioned, PINCOM, I don't think is meeting till next week with the rest of the town.
Right, I think this is a different discussion.
This is, this is my choice. All right, sorry.
Cost, cost versus.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, and, and, uh, sorry, and this second part of this is, um, prior to requesting this information. I think we're also looking for, uh, some, some hard data on the actual school choice program itself. And without that, we, we can't really know anything with the, the sped part of it. Because if the original school choice is costing us money versus actually making this money, then whether or not we're making whatever reimbursement is spent is, is the problem. So I think we need to kind of look at that holistically, both school choice as a whole and then additionally the, um, final spec, like, this, this said, portion of the reimbursement program.
Okay, so when you say, excuse me, hard data on school choice, are you looking for, um, more information regarding the number of students in, in a grade level?
No, no, so I think that we're really, we're really looking to do here is, and I, I told Christine, she and I can touch base and talk about this. Uh, but it, it essentially is a question of, okay, when we have a, when we have a school choice student. We get five thousand per student. What does it actually cost us to educate the student? Because there are more fixed variables, right, and there are probably some, what I would call hybrid fixed variable costs. So you really want to drill down, okay, what's, what's the variable cost for that student? And if it's three thousand dollars, then we're making two thousand, it's, it's a possibility, you should be doing it. You know, if it's six thousand dollars and we're getting five, we shouldn't be doing it. And just, just having dealt with the budget over, I mean, fifteen years of experience. I, I'm, I'm pretty confident that we're, we're making money.
We're absolutely making money.
And, and, and here's the thing, you don't want to see that.
Yeah.
I say I'm pretty confident, you're saying we're absolutely sure. If you're absolutely sure, tell me a little bit, because if you can't, then you're not absolutely sure.
Yeah.
And that's, that's what we're really looking to do, I think that's, that was the genesis of this, the original question was, um, how do we know what we, how are we, where are we reading? And it, it does behoove us to go through that data and say, okay, what does this mean? We can, we can take it up here and we can rip out a ton of this cost, very, very, very easy. And it's really, I'm not doing, okay, when John Smith comes in the door to be educated, is school choice, what cost do we in purpose he walks me? That's, that's the question, and that's what we really want to do is go and drill down on that. And then after we just determine that, after we establish, okay, school choice is net profitable, net negative, net wash there. Then we look back to the special education, say, okay, special education, what are we doing there? And ideally, in the end, we would be able to come up with, at least to some of it, because I think the special education is gonna be a little bit trickier, but you and I talked about the difficulty of that. Uh, and so, that would be trickier, but I think we can kind of come up with a rough number of, okay, this is generally kind of what we're thinking, what we're making or not.
And, and I would say for the large majority of the students, they're coming in, they're being, they're in a classroom that would be open regardless. We're not hiring a new teacher because we have these school choice coming, those coming in, so. I, I think there, it's definitely a gain in that regard because it, you know, they're following a group. It's like, you know, plane's going to Fort Lauderdale and there's three open seats, so they're taking those seats.
Right.
Well.
Three people get on that plane, you now have extra fuel to carry, it might not be much, but you need extra fuel, you have to figure that out, that's a variable cost. So you gotta, if you give away free peanuts, you know, you've given them free peanuts, it's variable cost to that extra person. So we have to go through that, and again, I think that it's like, it's highly likely, we're looking to get money. But we need to just go through those and at least put this question together, you, what's the problem, say, okay, it's, we're done with this. We, you know what we're doing, this is definitely profitable. And, and the trick of it is gonna be, Jenny and I talked about this in middle school, it's, it's very, very cut and dry. Because you can't just cut a teacher because of the model of the school. However, if you look at, you know, third grade and we have twenty seven school choice kids in that school. Well, you could put them all in one class, cut them out, cut that teacher, so there's, you know, now you have, that's a variable cost, that teacher's a variable cost. So it's, it's tricky, I get, and, and the special education part of it, you and I discussed this, I think probably, you're gonna look at that and say, okay, we have fifty eight kids.
And a special education.
Fifty eight kids, you're probably talking about the top ten to fifteen are the ones you wanna look at. The, when I say top ten to fifteen, I mean, cost, you know, in, in services record. The ones who are getting, um, services that are part of a, a larger classroom, et cetera, fifty, fifty. The cost has been so, so miniscule, so normal there that I think you probably can ignore those, but the higher ones you wanna look at and say, okay. What, what do we think is the actual cost we in purpose to educate each, every one of these kids and what do we get in the reimbursement?
Right, it, it is important to look at all of them now, right? Because as you said, the students with not as many services are, are more of a nominal cost, right? So it, you're bringing in additional funds.
Yes, you can, you can, if you, if you look at a couple of the, the, you know, bottom ones, again, in terms of cost, I'm always bringing it up, and the bottom kids say, hey, we think we're actually making money on these ones? And you think you, you can say, okay, we're making money here, maybe we're losing money here, in our sense, we're okay, you can actually do that. My thought process was, it's a lot to go through all fifty eight kids and figure that out. So if we're, if we're making money, if we're making money, we're breaking even on the high class ones, we're probably breaking even if we're making money. As my, as my guess, just understanding how, you know, what, what, thinking through how Christine probably looks at things. So that's, anyways, that's, I think that's where we're trying to get to with this question. And, and so the, the information we have today doesn't really, um, address it.
So just, I just wanna clarify, are you really hoping to see this as part of our school choice conversation vote? Maybe, maybe do it as part of our vote to continue for school choice next year?
When do we vote?
Or we have to just vote before June first?
Okay.
Or do we wanna continue having this conversation as part of the budget process?
We also gotta be a little careful, just because June first, or we're late for something, we wanna be school choice and then.
Yes, usually we open, um.
I know, that's called by law, but we would.
Mid to late April.
Okay, exactly, so we probably wanna put down a document soon.
All right, so we'll, we'll bring it to a march meeting.
Yeah, yeah, but, but we wanna get this right too, so. Well, it's, and you, and you're right, like, I don't wanna like, I don't wanna do it to the last second. And then we, yeah, then, yes, but, but, but we, we need to, we need to get the right answer here so we can start having a conversation. It's, this, you know, this is an important conversation, but some of us, a lot of us, by, by surprise, we're worried about the reimbursement issue. Um, so we need to, it's not, it's not, we feel much more comfortable about it. Because it could, it, it will materially impact what my vote is going to be.
And, and it's, it's a very complicated conversation, the complicated process, and it's not always a cut and dry answer, so. Christine and I will sit down and, um.
I, I did have one question, just looking at the general reimbursements, we have the five thousand per student. Can you just shed light on the ninety five, ninety seven per student for the Commonwealth Virtual School?
I had that same question.
Yes, so there are, are actually, um, two virtual schools in the state of Massachusetts, one is Cheka, um, uh, and the other is the Greenfield Virtual School. And so students are able to be left to attend those schools from any, you just have to be resident of the state. And they are totally online virtual schools. The choice rate that those schools receive is the ninety five, ninety seven, it is not the five thousand.
And so this.
So they don't even have teachers in class?
Would be something I would bring up if we, if we sit down, because I do not understand how a virtual school is almost twice as expensive to run as a, a constant school. That is insanity to me, that doesn't make any sense.
If we have a student in Norton that chooses to use this virtual academy.
Yes.
Norton pays.
It comes off the top from the state, so it goes before we see our, our allocation.
Yeah.
But the answer is yes.
But yeah.
So is it, is it, if money you don't get, it's money. So is there a physical location for this one?
Uh.
Like, because I know like.
I believe they must have some sort of offices, I know Cheka is in, um, Westwood and Greenfield, in Greenfield, Mass.
My thought is this, like, I know if I'm gonna school choice my child from Norton to Attleboro, somewhere in Norton, there's a check going to Attleboro or a transfer. So, and this is just a high level thought, so it, for another forty five hundred dollars, my kid can sit at home with their laptop. That I probably buy, it's probably not even provided. And someone down the line is saying his ninety five hundred dollars to a building that doesn't have a classroom potentially. So it's, it's not like a hybrid school, right, it's not like.
There are, no, they are virtual schools, so whether the teachers, I'm sure it varies based on the position, based on the school, based on whatever it may be. Some teachers are teaching from their own home to their students in the virtual academy, some teachers maybe physically in person. Um, they still have the costs of, of teachers and all of those other things, but.
Do we know when this option was added to school choice?
It was, probably, it was not added very long ago, um.
So they, so they added something new and didn't do anything about the formula that's been in place for twenty years?
I'm going to say the Greenfield Virtual School has probably been around about a dozen years. Um, because I, yes, um, because I remember Mrs. Anderson and I learning about it and not really understanding, um, when we first came to central office, um, a while ago. And it was, we had a really hard time figuring out what happened, but, um, yes, I'd say it's been about a dozen years.
Are these schools private companies?
No, they're public schools.
They're actual public schools?
Yeah.
Do they have any access?
Public building, not school.
Um, Cheka does because it's also a special education program that also regular school. I, I, I believe Greenfield also has students that are enrolled.
And this will be, this will be my last question, the nine thousand five hundred ninety seven dollars, has it been the same since the start of those schools?
I would imagine, I don't have any hard data on that.
You should, you should ask.
Absolutely.
Because if it's going up every year, boy, will I be upset.
Yep, I'll, I'll look find out for you.
I think my only thoughts on this is, I know we, I honestly think like, the only way to actually figure out how to look at two hundred and fifty two students in total, over one point six million dollars, it's like, normal student comes from Norton, walks into the school, how much does that child cost us to educate that year? Always kind of assume that's the per pupil cost of the step. So Colton Schleicher, second grade, is seventeen thousand dollars every year for the taxpayers involved. I, I can't, I, I cannot, my brain does not work this way, that how a Mansfield student comes to Norton pays us five. Where's that twelve thousand dollars?
Just, because Colton's not actually stepped, that's the problem.
On average, we're talking averages, we have special ed kids in, correct, I, I get it, I get it, Colton's not, he, maybe he's a, I don't know, school boss. But at the same time, in order to actually know how much we're spending on school choice, we need to go through all two hundred and fifty two of those kids. What's, it's way too big of a task for, I'm, I, 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 maybe I'm, but like.
We appreciate that.
You need to go, two hundred and fifty two kids, you know, Johnny cost us eight thousand dollars, uh, Suzie cost us two thousand dollars. This kid who has high needs and, you know, is in, you know, multiple, you know, interventions rooms and special ed rooms, cost us nineteen thousand. Get that cost, then say, one point six million dollars, how much was the revenue? I, I, I don't wanna like, it's numbers, there's gotta be numbers, we've gotta have somewhat of an idea of what that's costing us. And until we see two hundred and fifty two kids, what it's, our expenses are compared to what we're bringing in, we are never going to get a set number. So you're gonna actually wanna look at, I, sorry, but you're gonna wanna look at the opposite, right? What, what you're gonna wanna do is you're gonna wanna take our entirety of our budget and say, okay, what in our budget? So we are required by law to have schools, right? So we have to have, have school buildings, we have to keep them, we have to put lights and et cetera, et cetera. Take that, you can take that right off the top. And then we have, whatever the number of students are in Norton, we have X hundred students, we would already have, you know, Y number of teachers. Take those salaries right off the top, you're gonna take that number down very, very quickly when you do that. When you take out the fixed costs, you can take it down very, very quickly. And eventually you end up with variable costs that you cannot account for anywhere else, those are gonna be the variable costs that those students are. And my guess is it's gonna be really, really low. And, and, you know, the reality is, if my daughter comes to school tomorrow or doesn't come to school tomorrow, there's no change in cost to this, this district. Not zero, zero dollars, zero cents, so it's, the variable cost for these students has been really close to zero, what I'm saying. I mean, I don't know that, but understanding how, you know, business works, that's, that's what we're gonna find out, is like, variable cost is extremely low. The one, the one caveat to that is, have we, have we taken enough that we could move a teacher? You know, sorry, I'm saying move, it's a euphemism for something else, but move a teacher if we didn't have those kids. And that's gonna be the, 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 the closest, that's where the rubber's gonna be, the road, so to speak. So that, that's how you wanna approach this, you, you wanna start taking, taking money out, these are costs we're gonna incur no matter, it does not matter, there's nothing. So it's, it can be done, I actually, I actually think it's, uh, maybe I'm gonna, you guys won't, I showed, I, I actually think it can be done. Not easily, but it certainly can be done with a little bit of effort. Um, are we gonna get a perfect answer? No way, we're not gonna get a perfect answer because it's, you can't get that kind of granularity on, on variable cost on somebody. But we can at least know it's net positive, net negative with some, within some range, you know? We're fairly comfortable, we're making five hundred thousand dollars, we're fairly comfortable, we're making a million, we're pretty sure we're losing twenty. We, we can figure that out, and that should be able to answer the question, because if, if net, net we're making money, then we should continue to go. And I think another piece of this too, though, is that we never talk about, is what we're doing to our teachers and our special educators in these classrooms who now may have two, three, four extra kids in their cases. That's another cause that no one ever wants to talk about, because, hey, that's four less kids, that means we have four less IEP needs, that means we might be able to help, you know, some of those kids who are right on that, on that tier system of like, hey, should this kid be getting on IP, we need to look at services, that is, you can't calculate, it's impossible to calculate. Right, so like, we also need to look at it from the standpoint of what is best for our Norton students, which is absolutely immeasurable. With, with this data that we have, regardless if we said, hey, we're netting two hundred and fifty thousand, that's great, how many Norton kids we might have skipped over, missed, you know, didn't, didn't diagnose right, whatever the case may be. Simply because we added two hundred and fifty two students to our teachers in our cases, right? And, and Jen and I actually talked about that today, you know, Christine brought up the last thing and said, um, and this is a conversation that Jen and I had, it's, 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 it's hard to, to determine, but if, if net, net, if we're taking away from, um, we're taking away from the Norton kids to have what is essentially a wash, then it doesn't make a ton of sense, and, and we need to rethink it. If, however, it's a program that we have in place, and we're gonna have in place, for instance, we have a classroom that has seven kids, seven Norton kids now. We bring in an eighth school choice kid.
Or nine, or ten, or eleven, or twelve, we don't know.
Nine or seven, well, well, we do, right, so we, we do, we do know who's going where, we do know what kids are in what classes. I mean, that's, I'm sort of, we, we have a handout, if, if Johnny comes in, we know what classes he goes to.
Yes.
So.
But we are also not taking into consideration, Norton has a very well established special education program. And students will come here maybe with an IEP or maybe without, and then they start. And then all of a sudden, our, our fantastic teachers and special ed staff are like, ooh, I think this student might need a little bit more, or, ooh. Now that student that was supposed to be in this general ed classroom is now being moved to one of our specialized programs that we didn't.
Right, so we can't, we can't say yes to, yes, the kids only.
No, I, I know, I'm just saying though, like, that's the caveat though of having.
Right, so, so where I was going with this was, so if we have a classroom with seven kids and school choice comes in, we now have eight. If that classroom costs us, let's save this conversation, a hundred thousand dollars, and the reimbursement for that kid is twenty five thousand dollars, that's well worth it. He's paying for a quarter of that class and he's only twelve point five percent of that class. He's, he's paying for twice what he is of that class, I, I think that makes sense. I don't know if you guys agree, but the math is the math, right? Like, if, if the reimbursement for him is twenty five thousand.
Is the math, but then I just think about, I've been in those classrooms. These, some of these programs that we have have very challenging students. And those that live in Norton, I want them to be able to have the full support and attention given to them. Like, I get, I get what you're saying and I get it based on numbers, but then I'm just.
Let me change, let me expand the conversation, there are five such classes, each costs us a hundred thousand. Let me change, let me expand the conversation, there are five such classes, each costs us a hundred thousand, so it's five hundred thousand dollars. We have a kid coming to each one, hundred twenty five thousand dollars we get. If we don't, we don't get the hundred twenty five thousand dollars, and all of a sudden, there's a hundred thousand dollar cut. And we have to say, we can't have five classes, we can only have four, we have to crowd these kids in together a little more, this is what we have to do. That's not advantageous to, so that's, that's ultimately, and I'm not, I'm not saying you're wrong, I'm saying that that's the conversation you have to have is. What, and, and, and thus why I'm tabling this, I don't think we know what we have here, and I don't think we got the answer right here. I think we need to have the answer to those questions and say, okay, what, what do we have, what does this cost us? And then if we look and say, this isn't something that we really wanna do to our kids, we say, okay, going forward, we're gonna start to rethink it. However, we look and say, hey, listen, we're, we're really kind of, you know, being supplemented by, by this, and it, it is good for our kids. We wanna know that too, so that's all I'm saying, but, but, I, I'm not saying that, you know, this is, this is right or wrong. I'm just saying that what we have right now, I don't think we know what we have, and that's, that's why I wanna.
And I think if we're going to have conversations about the burdens of choice, we need to look at the cost. Um, because next year, we're using over two million dollars worth of school choice to help balance our budget. And without those funds, those would be another two million dollars worth of cuts for students. Um, so Christine and I will be, um. Burning the midnight oil, um, something, some sort of analogy, um, we'll figure it out and.
This is one of the longer, we're gonna table this. I think like one more thing like that just always sticks in my mind about school choice. We were making money, and it was a good, quote unquote, business model. Every single district in this, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts would be doing it at some degree. Why do some not, why do, oh, would, does, schools that have more, more students than school choice? And then there's other districts that say absolutely not, not doing so. Eastern, for example, no school choice, Mansfield just started school choice, if it was a business model that you're going to make. One point nine million dollars, two point six million dollars, five billion dollars, five hundred thousand dollars, all these districts are cutting money, they're all cutting budgets. We, we, we've seen it, obviously, the state, the state issues that we've had, if everyone's cutting. I would feel like every superintendent and every school committee would be like, hey, we can get an extra one point six million dollars. We just gotta bring in two hundred and fifty other, other stu-, other students. There's gotta be a reason why people are saying, wait a second, though, we could make one point six million dollars, why not?
But I think the cuts are just happening now, too.
There's an answer to the next question.
It, it took us a long time to, quote unquote, make money on this, I mean, if you're gonna stop school choice, you're gonna get ten kids. And the problem is, it's the five thousand dollars, like, that's the biggest, cause I mean, and, and we don't know. The ins and outs of every other district, or we don't know their capacity, things like that, I mean, you know, if it's just your high school, why is it just your high school? To me, like, I have a theory on why it's just your high school, but I'm not gonna say that, um, but, you know, it comes down to. You know, you're not gonna flip a switch, if you're a new district, I would say, no matter how good your district is, you're not going to be. Having two hundred and fifty kids, if you vote in school choice today, you're gonna get five or ten states in your first year.
If Newt, that's an example, sorry, if Franklin or Eastern Mass opened school choice, they would have kids flying pretty. Just simply because of their district and the way their schools are viewed and everything else. So without knowing, I mean, I don't know every.
They, they just actually stopped because of their increasing.
Right, so I, I don't know every district, so I certainly can't speak for them, I suspect there are a number of reasons, um, for some, for some districts. It's going to be a, you know what, we're a rich town, we're happy with what we have here, we don't need to. For other districts, it's going to be, like, for instance, I know for a fact, Attleboro stopped doing it because they didn't have capacity. Their, their, their high school is, is actually beyond capacity, they, they can't take. Yes, yes, they, they built it incorrectly, it is, or they built it based on bad numbers, whatever, whatever.
All the bells and whistles.
So they, they ended up building it too small, and they had to stop doing it because they couldn't fit the kids in the town. So there are different reasons why somebody, like, some, some towns aren't in a, um, in a geographical position to do it. You have to be, you know, the reality is, you have to be a good district next to, I hate to say like bad districts, but next to some bad districts, because otherwise. Good districts don't send their kids to other good districts, it's, you know, not knocking any towns or areas, but some of the towns or areas send here because. Their, their parents say, I want my kids to go to a district where it's safe, and it's good education, et cetera, et cetera.
And some of those other towns, quite frankly, have better budgets than.
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's a number of reasons, I, I don't think that it's just, it's a bad business model, we're getting fooled, I don't think that's the case, I, I think this is. This is something that's singular to, to each district, and, listen, like I said, let's table it, and if the numbers say. That we should stop, then we'll, we'll notice stop going, you know, going forward, we'll stop doing it.
Anything else? I'm fine with the table.
Do you guys want any budget update, or?
My statement was on the budget, I just.
Someone read that back to me.
Is there really any update on budgets?
Um, not, I mean, not really, um, Christine and I are meeting. Christine and I are, um, meeting with Mike Unitas on Monday afternoon, um, he's pretty confident that we have a better number for us.
Okay.
Um, than in there, so we're keeping our fingers crossed.
So historically, historically, that number is not just up, so right now. We always get this first number, but everybody's really sure it's gonna be the number, and it's not.
So at times, I think it's backwards, is, is, you know, we would vote in what we think we can manage. As far as what our cuts are, and then it's, it really is the voters that it's going to, like, if we come up here and say, we, we're gonna vote a four percent increase. Then, then that's it, I mean, I, I don't, when you're setting your budget, like.
Well, that's get appropriate by town, so we can, we can tell them, we can vote in whatever budget we want, but in the end, and, and Mike Unitas has a second. Mike Unitas has his budget. The, uh, FinCom has their budget, which usually is very close to, to Mike's. But the only budget that matters is what the town citizens vote at the town. That's the only thing that matters, that being said, I'm, I'm not saying that there should be some compromising, you should be, you know, Robert Peter paid Paul. But, but that's the only budget that matters, is what gets passed at town, at town. When, uh, whenever our budget's officially due?
Um, our budget is due to Town Hall on March eighteenth. Um, so our next meeting is March fourteenth, so we'll have to do our budget hearing at that time, um, and the committee will have to vote on our budget. So we will need to, um, decide if we are sending forward that twelve point zero one percent of our voted budget. Or if there is another number that the committee, um, feels is more appropriate.
When is FinCom starting with their?
Um, we present to FinCom at the very beginning of April.
So our budget's due before we present to FinCom? In what world does that make any sense?
Um, I believe it's for the committees to review it. So our budget's due to Town Hall, then we have to present our budget books by early April, um, I believe it's seventh or the eighth that we sent to them.
So what is FinCom hearing in the next couple of weeks then? Is it essentially going to be like the hearing we had where we say, this is what we expect, this is what we, you know?
This is what we have, this is what we need.
So they're just doing it with FinCom as opposed to us doing it?
Yeah.
So is every other town budget due at the same time as ours?
Uh, yes, I believe they've already turned them off, I think they already were in earlier, we get a little bit more time. Um, for us, we just need to have the budget hearing and for you to vote, otherwise, if you wanna push forward, the twelve points here, we're ready to go. I mean, that's what we need, that's level.
In actuality, we, if we come out of our budget meeting and say, we're voting a twelve percent increase to our budget. I assume then the next step is it goes to FinCom and they say you're gonna get four percent.
Yes.
And then it goes to the floor of town meeting at four percent.
Yes, so I mean, ultimately, we, we present what we believe is appropriate, it's the recommended budget from the school committee, but.
FinCom technically, I believe, can also not run. They can, they can't even say, but they can be not, 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 look. But they, they have historically been higher than Mike, than us, which makes great sense, but honestly, uh. But I think, you know, I think somewhere south of four is, it's, it's southern four, I, I don't know. And it, and it's, it's, it's just the reality of towns, I mean, it's just not feasible to do.
No, it's.
Without the federal government coming up with some new, you know, some new crazy plan, it's possible, there's no way it's. So, you know, we know it's south of four, it's probably north of three, but, um, even in that, north of three, south of four, we're, we're.
Alright, so do we need to follow through on this motion to table this, or? Is there any other business?
No.
Uh, I got a quick one, uh, just to update everybody, I reached out to. Um, Congressman Auctionclaws, who is our, uh, representative in DC. I reached out to our state senator Paul Feeny, uh, who oversees Norton, and I reached out to both of our state reps who split Norton, Jay Barrows. And Steve Howitt, um, basically asking for an open forum and going through state requirements and guidelines. Around, uh, school choice, out of district expenses, um, three, three different things or whatever.
The mandates.
Oh, and the, uh, yes, and the, uh, unfunded state mandates, um, trying to get an open forum with them. Um, you know, hopefully in a situation such as this, I'm anticipating in my head, again, not a person who knows exactly how to run these things. But what I'm kinda anticipating is calling like a, a special meeting within, uh, school committee, hopefully, probably looking at sometime in April is my guess. Um, but trying to get an idea and more of an educational segment from our state reps of like, what is the state actually going to do? To hopefully point us in the right direction, I think all of us up here, uh, everyone was in support of it, I also included Superintendent O'Neil on it. Uh, of just kinda getting an idea, trying to educate Norton on kind of what we're up against, um, and then a standpoint of, you know. What, you know, we elect these people, it's never going to change until we, you know, start making change. Um, and then, you know, talking about some of these things that we were talking about within our budget, and how we can actually, you know, possibly. Get our legislators to stop really looking at this from a standpoint of, again, this is not just a Norton issue, uh. Talked on the phone with Howitt and, and Barrows, um, this week, which was really good, uh, Feeny and Auctionclaws kinda gave you their. Out of, out of, uh, away message, if you will, with a, hey, thanks for your email, we'll get back to you. I'm expecting Paul to get back to us, Paul's usually pretty good, especially, you know, talking within Norton and whatnot, uh, Senator Feeny. Uh, I'm not expecting much from Auctionclaws, just based on his history, if you will, uh, keep it nicely. Um, and just kinda going from there, so I'll kinda keep everyone updated as we go, and, uh, hopefully we can get something set up, have them, you know, in attendance. And, you know, kinda go from, from that standpoint.
Thanks for doing that. Anything else? Anything else, you guys? Alright, so is there a motion to adjourn and adjourn to executive session to the purpose of preparation for the meetings with the Norton to this association not to return to open session?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, so, um, I should already, yes, Dennis?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
And Dan?
Yes.